Meeting of the Campbell County Board of Education Work Session is now called to order. Mr. Parsons, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our first item on the agenda is Dr. Sacks with the West Virginia Board of Education Policy 5309 Superintendent's Evaluation.
Thank you, Madam President. This is basically, if you look in your packet, there's a, I have a couple of handouts. The first is this sheet, and it's right after your board agenda, and it talks about the superintendent's performance evaluation process. So what is important for the board to know at this point is that, starting with the next school year, county board shall submit to the state superintendent for approval by the West Virginia Board of Education a written description of the proposed evaluation process and a copy of the evaluation forms adopted by the county board. This is a deviation from what you're used to doing to evaluate the role of the superintendent because there was a code change and a policy change from the Department of Education this past year. And really, they've really simplified the evaluation instrument example to use that complies with the new code as well as the new state policy. However, the board, if it so chooses, can develop its own policy, or I should say, the board can adopt its own process and instrument if they so choose. The, so really, you have two options that we would need to be able to put on a future board agenda so that we can codify this action. The first is, the first option is the board could approve the adoption of the superintendent's performance evaluation process as outlined in the West Virginia Board of Education Policy 5309 and use the same template that was developed by the West Virginia School Board Association and the West Virginia Association of School Administrators. What you should know is, obviously, I belong to the West Virginia Association of School Administrators, you all belong to the West Virginia School Board Association. Both entities had a committee that met together, so superintendents met with county school board association committee members, and they developed the template as well as this policy, and they submitted to the Department of Education. The Department of Education said, "This looks good, it meets the requirements," and so it was approved. And so that's an example that I'm going to go through with you all here in a second. The other option, and I apologize, I did have a misspelling there, but the board would then, could, if they did not want to adopt what the Department of Education has provided, the board could develop its own process in alignment with the Department of Ed Policy 5309. You know, my recommendation is that we make this as simple as possible, and we just, we adopt the processes as developed by the School Board Association and the West Virginia Association of School Administrators. But, so I wanted to go through that with you so you could see what really that entails. The next item that I've provided you is the old evaluation instrument, okay? And so if you look at the old evaluation instrument, you had a place for your goals, and then, of course, the, and what I did was, just for today's meeting purposes, I went ahead and put the goals that the board did approve already before September 15th, 2021. And, of course, there were timelines, and there were how it would be evaluated. I did not pop these into this document right now, but they will be there at the end of the school year, obviously. So then, after Section 1, we have Section 2. And so Section 2 had several required components. And, so those were Category 1, Category 2. So Category 1 and Category 2, which stops on Page 6, were all the required categories. Then we had optional categories that started on Page 6, and, of course, you all remember how lengthy this instrument is, there's a lot to it. Some things are necessary to probably be evaluated every year, some things are not. But this is the current instrument that you all are used to seeing, and you are used to evaluating your superintendent against, or the, or as a resource. So that's the first thing, just again, to refresh your memory as to what we currently have in place. This, under the policy, is not required any longer, but I will talk to you about what is required and what is optional moving forward. The next thing I've provided for you is the more specific things that you did approve on September 15th, which is the handout that has the superintendent's goals for '21, '22. Obviously, the overarching goal is what is listed in the template, but there's strategies and then, of course, measures of success, which are, you know, how we would be evaluating that goal specifically. I do want to bring to your attention that, for the past four years that you all have evaluated me, there's always been a goal around student achievement. And I think that that's really important because you're going to find that, in the new policy, we're already doing what the new policy says we need to do, which is to have a goal around student achievement. The other thing is, is the other subsequent goals are always aligned to our school district's strategic plan. That is another component that is required in the new process. So, again, what we're already doing as a school board and superintendent relationship for evaluation purposes is something that's already outlined, or we're already doing something that is outlined in the new process that was approved by the Department of Ed. So the next document that I've provided you is a handout that, let's see here, it may not be stapled, mine's not stapled, yours may be, but it's this document here, it's a Superintendent's Evaluation Policy 5309. So if we can just go to this, and they did not number these pages, so I do apologize, but if you go to the second page in, it says Superintendent's Evaluation Process. I just want to go over that with you all, and it's in blue letters at the top. So they have the required criteria. So thinking about what we currently have and what they're telling us we need to do, just puts it in context. So required criteria, "Before September 15th, the county board and superintendent shall establish written measurable and timely goals which can include a specific, can include, I'm sorry, which include a specific timeline for completion." So we're used to doing that, that's nothing new. "At least one goal must relate to student achievement." We're already doing that, that's nothing new, but it is a new expectation for superintendent evaluations in other counties because they've never done that, believe it or not. "Goals support progress of the established county strategic plan goals." Again, we're already doing that. "The evaluation process must address how goals will be established when the board and superintendent are not in agreement regarding goals." This is something that, what I would suggest that we do in thinking about it is that it does not need to be specifically, and I've asked for guidance from the Department of Education on this, it's not something that when we, if we adopt what the state has approved, it would just need to be articulated in our evaluation of the superintendent policy as to how would a conflict, if, for example, you all believe that I should create a goal around X, and I say, "Well, I don't agree." Obviously, that is not anything that we've ever encountered, I don't think it's something that we would ever encounter, but if the day comes when there's a situation between a board and the superintendent for this school district, we would need to articulate how that process would be resolved. "Evaluation must be completed by June 30th or March 1st if the superintendent's contract is set to expire on the ensuing June 30th." That's nothing new, that's exactly what the state policy's always had. "And then the evaluation of the superintendent shall occur in executive session and a general statement about the process and overall result is made available to the public." So there, again, that's still in accordance with what you all are used to doing. What is different is the optional criteria. So the optional criteria, some of which are similar in nature to what was on this rubric, are the following: community relations, school finance, personnel relations, curricular standards and programs, overall leadership across the county as indicated primarily by improvements in student achievement, testing and assessment, the superintendent's performance of any duties other than the chief executive officer of the county board as delineated by the superintendent's contract or other written agreement, and the degree to which the superintendent keeps the county board apprised continuously of any issues that affect the county board or its schools, programs, and initiatives. So really, if you look at this, the only thing that's required that the board used for its evaluation are the goals, okay? Which is deviating from this because there was a specific rubric attached that the board could use. So all that the depart, all that the state policy requires is evaluation of the goals. However, the board could use these optional criteria, which can be determined on an annual basis. It does not, you know, it just says that you would, if you, if you adopt this process that's outlined here, as opposed to creating our own, these optional criteria could be considered on any given year that the board says, "We want to evaluate these criteria." If we move to the next page, here is the actual document that they provide that says, you know, of what's required, again. And so, again, this is very familiar with what you're already used to seeing. And then the next page is the additional information and/or commendations, and that's it. This is the entire instrument that they are suggesting or are providing for boards to consider for approval. Again, there is no rubric that's established for the optional criteria. They want to be able to leave that to the discretion of the boards to how they want to evaluate those components. It may be ancillary or anecdotal feedback, but it's nothing that is specifically on a rubric, per se. The next thing that you'll find that I wanted to provide you, though, is the actual policy. There's a couple places that I wanted to be able to bring you, bring to your attention. If you look at the, so there's the first page, I'm going to move beyond the first page of that policy to the top of the next page, which is Policy 126-143-4, Item 4.1A, which is the second bullet down. It says, "In order to receive West Virginia Board of Education approval by July 1st, the county board must submit its proposed evaluation process to the state superintendent before the proceeding December 31st." Which means that, in order for us to be in compliance, we do need to be able to submit to the state superintendent the desire of this board to either use this instrument or to deviate by this December 31st. This policy was only approved by the state board also, it was just last month. So this is, the policy was adopted, then the committees came together, we literally just got this document within the last two weeks, so we're moving pretty rapidly. The Department of Education has indicated, if we intend to go with this document, that that December 31st, since this is the first year of implementation, they can theoretically wait till February to get that notification. It's, they're lenient on that, on that date, but I wanted to be able to explain that to If you move down, ooh, that just got a whole lot louder, what happened there? If you, if you go down to the required criteria, these things, if you'll, if you'll look, you know, 5.1A, and then 5.1A1, moving to the next page, these are all items that we just went over in the required criteria, they're just sort of spelled out. But I did want to bring your attention to 5.1B.1. And it states that, "In a manner determined by the county board and superintendent, the process considers input from other parties such as citizens and school employees." So in talking with some counterparts in other counties, what their boards just recently approved last week, when they go to adopt this, when they have gone to adopt what the School Board Association and the Association of School Administrators and the Department of Education collaboratively put together, their interpretation of this one specific piece is that informing, this is in order to inform the goals of the superintendent. So, you know, in Campbell County, we've used surveys, like currently, we have a stakeholder survey that's out right now. We've done superintendent stakeholder surveys in the past. But we also have a lot of anecdotal feedback from community members. We have, each board meeting, we have delegations to be heard that come up, and they provide us input as to what they think of, you know, how the school district's running. There is information through emails, there's a lot of other, I think, components as to how this board receives input, as to how the school district is operating. And so I would advise against, if we were to develop our own process, that we would come up with, for example, an annual, a yearly survey that we put out. And the only reason that is, is that the ebbs and flow of different things that go on in the school district, if the survey being close to the end of the evaluation period would be during personnel season or financial seasons, that, there can be ebbs and flow to how people feel about the health of the school district at different times of the year. And so I think that being able to take a bunch of, to take in more of a high-level, robust undertake, understanding of perceptions or input from community members is probably a better way to gauge input from the community and from employees and citizens. So that's just the one suggestion that I wanted to bring up as it related to 5.1B.1. And then if you go on down to the optional criteria, at the bottom of that page, you'll see that it provides an overview of the several different optional criteria that can be used, which are outlined, again, on that first page that I went over. And then, of course, it has, if you go to the last page there, it has a use of the evaluation results. The county board may use the results of its evaluation of the superintendent's performance to determine whether to offer the superintendent a new contract and the level of compensation or benefits to offer the superintendent and a new contract. And then, "Evaluation training as an integral part of the process for evaluating the performance of superintendents for the '22-'23 school year. In subsequent years, all board, county board members and superintendents shall receive evaluation training approved by the West Virginia Board of Education and conducted jointly by the West Virginia School Board Association and the West Virginia Association of School Administrators." So, again, I just, I wanted to be able to give you everything that I had as it relates to the need for us to formally approve something so that we can submit it to the Department of Education. And again, my recommendation to this board is that we just, we take what the process that's already been provided as an example and submit that to the state board, as opposed to developing our own instrument with different, deviating from what they've provided. And so basically, if you have any questions, we can discuss it. I would, my intent would be, based upon the feedback that I get from you all, is, or really, it'd be the feedback from the president. Madam President, if you want to talk with your, the board members, and then allow me the opportunity to place that on a board agenda, then we can do that so that we can try to meet this timeline as much as possible.
So is there a timeline, or can you get all the agenda?
Ideally, I would like to be able to get it approved by the board before December 31st so that we're in, but again, the Department of Ed said if we, if we don't get it to them by sometime in February, that should not be a big deal for this year.
Well, my recommendation would be to put it on the first meeting in December.
And I can do, yeah.
And I will concur with the rest of the board. If that's, is that okay with the rest of the board?
I've got questions. The optional, and I do this on purpose, would that not be included in this new one? It seems like an oversimplification to me. These don't seem optional to me.
Which is that?
This is your running of, of the district.
Which, which part is that?
On optional criteria that could be included.
Mm-hmm.
So if we would adopt what the state is recommending, would those things be excluded? Am I understanding you correctly?
No, you, what that would mean is, is that on any given year, you could choose to still evaluate those optional criteria, but what you had to do is the required criteria. So the board's obligation in adopting the, this template, so to speak, is, the board would be required to fulfill the requirements of the required criteria, but they could always consider some of the, some or all of the optional criteria if they so choose. The same, if you look at the way that it's been done in the past with the previous instrument, you know, the two categories, so you had the goals that were required, and then you had Category 1 and Category 2. Well, Category 1 was success in improving student achievement generally, and Category 2 was success in improving student achievement specifically through the management and administration of low-performing schools. All of the other optional categories, which meant that you did not have to evaluate those components, were really community, that was, they were, they were like what's in here in the optional components: community relations, finance, personnel relations. So boards did not, boards did not have to evaluate the superintendent on those other categories. They could, but it, but it didn't require them to. And a lot of times, you know, something to think about is that if, if you look at your school district's strategic plan, who, which has, you know, several pretty broad goals with strategies that are outlined, a lot of times, you're going to find that, and if you, for example, if you just take our current strategic plan, our current strategic plan is focusing on also personnel relations, hiring and recruiting the best, okay? Well, that's obviously a goal, and so you're going to evaluate me on that goal, but if you wanted to dig a little bit deeper, you could say that we're going to evaluate the superintendent on personnel relations. Nothing would, nothing would require you to do, to do that. Or if, if, let's say, you know, there's some other ones here, "The superintendent's performance of any other duties of the chief executive office of the county board as delineating the superintendent's contract or other written agreement." Well, that may mean that you, upon mutual agreement between the superintendent and the board in approval of the superintendent's contract, there's something specific that you all place in the superintendent's contract that would require evaluation. And so, obviously, that metric from the contract would be evaluated per the stipulation set forth in that contract. So you are right, all of these things are things that the superintendent does, but it doesn't mean that the board has the requirement to always evaluate them. A lot of times, what you find is people decide that they're going to evaluate something when there's a problem. You know, if you, you're like, "Oh, there's a problem, so now we're going to evaluate it." The thing is, is that what's, I think, important to me is that if the board would choose to evaluate it, that I'm given ample notice, preferably when the goals are established, that, "Mr. Superintendent, we're going to evaluate community relations this year in addition to your four goals. Superintendent, we're going to evaluate school finance in addition to your four goals." What I would tell you is that if you all put me on notice that you wanted to evaluate one of those areas, I'm going to darn well make sure that it's one of my goals, so that I can make sure that, you know, I can hit that target. So again, you're correct, Mrs. Bond, these are all things that are required of the superintendent, but the state has said that these are optional criteria that the board does not have to evaluate each and every single school year.
I mean, I guess I do understand we're not required, but just because we're not required doesn't mean that it's not the right thing to do so.
Sure.
Those are, there's a great deal of importance right there. And I think if you're waiting until something is wrong to evaluate something, then you yourself are negligent. We need to be keeping an eye on these things all the time to best support the district and our kids.
And I don't disagree. I think if you look at those optional criteria, what I find interesting about those optional criteria is if you look at my goals that we've established, my, the goals that I established this year, and really, quite frankly, in previous years, they, they're all, they incorporate all of those.
Commutation.
Optional criteria. Community relations, school finance, personnel relations, the curricular standards, and I mean, all of those things are already in this, what you all have established. Because, again, you're right, it's part of the total job of the superintendent.
Job, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Superintendent, if you could correct me if I'm wrong, on this previous evaluation that we did of you, there were some, several required things in it that we did, but then there was a whole list of optional things, and I think we were so diligent, we did it anyway. But I don't think we were required to, right? Is that correct?
That is required, yes, sir.
Yeah. Can you have a question? Do you have a problem?
I am. I would just, I guess the question is, are we leaning toward Option 1, or are we wanting to develop, are we wanting to put together something where we develop? Because I think it's important to know that if, you know, as you look at those optional criteria, there is no rubric anymore that's been established. They've, they have done away with those requirements, and so it would be based upon, you know, if there's specific things that you identify beyond the superintendent's goals that you want to evaluate, then we would have to come up with a strategy to evaluate those appropriately.
Can I have an option one?
I need to think about it.
That's fine.
I'm not leaning, I'm not leaning either way.
Sure.
I am standing upon the fence at this point.
And I would.
I need to read some more.
And I would also say that I, it does not bother me, one way or the other, Option 1 is just probably the path that's easiest.
Yeah.
To go through, it's the most efficient, and I think that it had a lot of people that were involved in coming up with something for, for boards to consider. But whatever, whatever path the board chooses, I'll, I will work with you all to put that into action.
I need time to read through this.
Absolutely.
You just got it.
Yep.
Okay, well, are you okay, Melissa, if we put that on the agenda for the first meeting, would that give you enough?
Yes, Madam President, that gives me plenty of time.
Okay, so we will put that on the agenda for the first meeting in December.
Thank you.
Are you all right with it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Skip, Charles?
Yes, ma'am.
First meeting in December, put that on.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, is that, is that included?
No, no, actually, we can't. It's a workshop.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll go to Mr. Rodkin, federal grants.
All right. Well, good evening, board members.
Evening.
Oh, are they not on? Okay, well, as the guys are coming around to set that up, you also have a handout, I think, in your packet that says, "Federal Grants."
See, I don't know how to do that one, I've tried to do it before.
So you're welcome to refer to the handout or follow along on the screen once we get them up. Well, thank you, Jed, thank you, Jason.
There we go.
Okay, so this is kind of continuing the discussion we've started the last couple of months. Remember, last month, I got up in the work session, and we talked about Medicaid funding, and that was a pretty brief presentation, but, you know, I just wanted to kind of give you some context that, you know, that's some federal money that we get every year. Used to be about twice as much as it is now, but it has stabilized over the last several years. So, you know, we think that that's, that's money we can count on, you know, in the future, is the Medicaid funding. So kind of step two in the series, or seminar series of where our money comes from, is a presentation tonight on federal grants. And I want to thank Ms. Watts and her team, they helped so much being able to put this presentation together, because here in Campbell County, we do get a lot of grants, and we get a lot of federal grants. In fact, we had a deadline to draw down money from previous fiscal year, you know, just recently, and I had over 40 grants, 40 federal grants to draw money down from.
Wow.
Because we really have that many in the county. We, we have a lot of different grants. But as I walk you through this presentation this evening, we are going to consolidate it a little bit. You know, when we get to the Title 1 slide, I'm going to talk about Title 1 in general. You know, we might have like five different Title 1 grants going at the same time, we're just going to consolidate it into one slide. So it just kind of gives you a little bit of a context. And I also want to, you know, kind of mention, we've got our new compliance officer here, he works for Ms. Watts, but I think he'll be working both with, with her and me quite a bit, as we try to manage these grants, particularly the new ESERF funds moving forward. So we'll talk a little bit about that, so let's get this discussion started. Please feel free to ask any questions as we go along. My intent is to try to keep this fairly high level. You know, if we get a lot of really good questions, we might want to consider, you know, tacking on at another present, another work session. But please feel free to ask any questions you have, and we'll try to address those. Thankfully, I have Ms. Watts here, if I start to stumble at all, we can probably tag-team a couple of things. So the first thing, if you will, whether you're turning with me or watching with me, is just some general conditions of our federal grants. And these are kind of the rules that apply to all of our grants. Instead of putting it on each slide, we're just kind of... And so, instead of putting it on each slide, we're just kind of laying out the ground rules right at the beginning, and if you are on the screen, that is awful small, and I apologize. But the first thing is, and there, there is some vocabulary here, so I'm gonna try to break that down for everybody. The first thing is that our federal funds have to be considered supplemental, and they cannot supplant other funding, or local funding. And what that basically means is that there's a certain amount that you're supposed to fund as a district, out of your general fund. And that, just to really break it down in layman's terms, if you've got a school that's high poverty, and you got a school that's the opposite, you've got maybe a wealthier clientele, student base, you have to be able to provide like services at both schools, okay? You have to be able to do that, because it's not fair to discriminate against either population. You gotta be able to have, gotta have the same services at both. There's kind of like a minimum threshold you've got to be able to do. Now, once that, once that threshold is established, and we all come to terms, and this is something we do annually, we determine, you know, what should be at each school, once that threshold is set, that's when the federal money can kick in. And so, if you have a school that maybe is lower poverty, or there's a high need in some certain area, you can use your federal funds to go on top of that baseline. But you, you can't, you can't decide, out of my general fund, because I'm trying to save money, I'm gonna trim a little here, and I'll just backfill it with federal money. That, that is illegal, and that's when people go to jail.
Yeah.
So, you can't do that. But what you, what you do have to do is you maintain a base, and then you can build on top of that base. And so, when we, we'll get through some slides here in a little bit, but you'll, you know, some of the grants, and you guys see this, you know, on board agendas, when we hire new staff, we hire, you know, special social workers at certain schools, or special positions that are kind of above and beyond what maybe some other schools are getting, that's because they're grant-funded, and they're, they're supplemental, they're above that baseline. And so, as long as the funding is, is provided, as long as we continue to get that funding, those positions can be maintained. If the, if the funding ever goes away, that's where you, you have to go back to that baseline. And so, that's how that's accomplished. So, that's kind of the first thing you gotta know about federal money. The second thing, and a lot of people don't know this, so I'm just throwing this out there so that you guys are aware, that with federal funds, particularly the ones through the Department of Ed, which is most of them, most of them that we have, you have to spend the money upfront, and then get reimbursed. And it's not, it's not easy to where it's like, oh, well, you know, you know, we paid a bill, and, you know, I'm bumming five bucks from a friend, it's not that kind of thing. This is where, you know, we might be able to do a drawdown request monthly, in some cases, it's quarterly, depends on kind of how much we're talking about. But being able to make those, those regular drawdowns is important, because on these grants where we're funding positions, some of these expenses we're having to pay for upfront are in the tens of thousands of dollars, or hundreds of thousands of dollars. And in fact, in, in a normal month, our Title I, it's not unusual for it to be several hundred thousand dollars that, just in one month, I'll spend out a Title I for payroll, just because we have so many staff members that come out of that fund. So, that's something that, that's also really important to know, and just from a, a money management standpoint, this is kind of where I come in, if you're going to have a lot of federal grants, where you have to spend the money first, and then get reimbursed, then you have to make sure you got enough money in the bank to cover that.
Yeah.
And so, and that's another thing that sometimes people who, whether they be in Charleston or wherever, sometimes they look at counties and they, they say, well, you have all this money, and, you know, what are you doing with all this money? You have to have money in the bank to be able to spend this money, because you have to spend it upfront. You know, they won't give us the money to start with, we have to spend it and then get reimbursed. So, it's really important that you maintain a fund balance, so that you have money and you're not, you're not bouncing checks. Yes, ma'am.
What in the world do our counties do that are very low income
Yeah.
in general? How does that feel with that?
Well, I'll tell you, I'd, I'd had this discussion with somebody the other day, I don't want to reveal the county, and this was, this was a number of years ago, but I had a gentleman in my prior job in another county, so he's up that way, and he was, you know, I was calling him about something, some kind of issue I was asking for some advice on, and just kind of, a little bit of a chit-chat, and see how things are going. He said, well, things are not going so well in my county right now. He said that we just bought several new school buses, and they're calling me, and they're very angry, because I haven't paid the bill yet, and he said, I, I understand where they're coming from, but I've told them I can either pay for the buses, or I can pay my employees. And until my next round of tax money comes in, I don't, I can't do both. So, there are counties that have been in that kind of shape. Boone County was pretty highly publicized about four or five years ago, that they were in a position, actually, about April, they found out they didn't have enough money to pay their staff the rest of the school year, and the state had to get involved and kind of give them a short-term loan to be able to get them through the end of the school year. Now, it all worked out, they, you know, they, they prepaid the loan, then there was a big lawsuit, and they had to backpay some employees for, for yanking out some benefits that didn't comply with personnel law. But that does happen in some of these counties that are broke. Now, now, right now, you know, with all the federal stimulus funds, a lot of counties are in fairly good shape right now, but prior to COVID, there had been some very lean years, especially if you go back five, six, eight years ago. And if counties aren't careful when the stimulus money ends, you could see some counties very quickly go back into that situation, if they're not prepared to make those necessary adjustments at that time. So, that was, that was a little take-home nugget, I wanted you all to understand also, that with federal grants, you have to pony up the money first, and they'll pay you back later. So, that's something we, we do in my office. Another thing is that all the expenditures that you make with federal funds, there's actually some additional restrictions, you know, a lot of the stuff that we deal with here in the county, you know, we, we first have to make sure it complies with state law, you know, we can't be spending money on things that are unlawful, we definitely wouldn't want to do that. And we also have to make sure that we're complying with our own local purchasing policy. With federal funds, there's, I hate to call it a policy, but there's a set of federal regulations that used to be, it was all over the place, and finally, I don't know what year, but it's been in the last decade, they consolidated them all into what's called the Uniform Guidance, so that's in your slides. And that's a set of rules that are general conditions that apply to all grants. Some of it doesn't directly apply to us, there's stuff in there about you can't spend money on lobbying, you know, we don't really do that here. There's stuff in there about you can't spend money on tobacco products, we wouldn't do that anyway. But there's, there's also things about what is allowable, what's not, what kind of direct costs and indirect costs that you can charge to the grant. And so, those things are all ironed out in the Uniform Guidance, and so, that's an extra layer that we have to comply with whenever we make purchasing decisions with federal money. Another thing, and this is a scary thing, actually, a little bit about federal funds. I mentioned you had to spend the money upfront and then get reimbursed? Well, another thing that happens is there is a day, there is a deadline on that money, and if you miss that deadline, you don't get reimbursed. And so, it's very, very important that we keep an eye on our deadlines, and we make sure that we draw down money on or prior to that deadline. And so, that's another thing, and, and I put in here in your notes, it's about forty-five days after, so our, you know, there was a big deadline that happened September 30th, forty-five days is today. And so, today is a drawdown deadline, where counties have to make their last request for some grants today. So, we've made sure we were in compliance there. These grants that we get, these federal funds, they're all audited by our outside auditor. You guys, you remember seeing the audit reports, I think you got some documents recently from our auditor. You know, he'll review our, our federal funds, but they also receive some scrutiny from the Department of Ed, since we partner with the Department of Ed on these funds, and so they'll come in periodically, and a lot of times, they'll work mostly with Ms. Watts, and they just kind of come to me for some reports. But they'll come in and, and test compliance, and make sure that we're spending money, you know, on things that we're allowed to spend money on, and that we've, you know, purchased them the right way, we've seeked the, the correct number of bids. And the last thing I wanted to make sure, you know, just kind of setting the ground rules, and we, we will move a little quicker once we kind of lay all this out, is that because you have federal funds, your, your overall audit, when Mr. Masidi comes in and does our audit each year, it is a more stringent audit, because the auditors are required to take a much deeper look, if you're an entity that has a significant amount of federal funds. And so, what they, it's called a single audit, is, is the audit terminology, but it does put additional requirements, and so, you, you know, you basically do get a better quality audit, but by doing that, you know, because there's all these additional funds, there's, there are strict guidelines he has to follow to make sure that he's also certifying that the information is accurate and it's been used appropriately.
That makes sense.
Any questions?
Any questions?
That makes sense to me.
Okay. All right.
Let me ask, Madam President, the, all of these federal grants, like, do they, they come directly to the county, like yourself, like Campbell County, and then it's administered in local schools, or is any of it involved with local schools at all?
The federal funds, they all have to stay here at the board office.
Okay, okay.
There's actually something in one of our purchasing policies that say, any kind of state or federal funds the county might receive, or maybe a school would directly receive, it has to come to the board office.
Okay.
So, if a school were to get a fifty thousand dollar check from the state, they would have to turn that money over to the board office, because that, it's state and federal revenue.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you all. Next slide, and you're probably better off using your handouts if you have it there. This is just a little bit of a perspective, just to kind of show you the size of some of the grants. This is our special revenue fund. So, special revenue means it's some kind of special money with special strings attached. And you can see that there are several very large pieces of this pie. The largest one is Title I, and you can see that that's almost thirty-one percent of the federal revenue in, in the special revenue fund, followed by food service. It's not really a grant, but it is federal revenue, so we're gonna talk a little bit about that towards the end of the presentation. That was about twenty-seven percent. And IDEA, that's, that's special ed, is what that is. So, that's about a quarter of, of the special, of the federal funds going into the special revenue fund. And then you can see there's some very, quite a bit smaller slivers in, in the pie, and those make up some of the other grants that we receive. So, as we go through these slides, and like I said, I think we'll move fairly quickly once we kind of get things going, you kind of put that into perspective, Title I, food service, special ed, Title II probably also, those are your major programs. And the other things, not so big, still very valuable, very impactful, but not, not quite as big as those programs. Okay. So, the first one that we have on here to talk about is the IDEA funds, that's special ed, like I said, and it actually comes in two different grants every year. And sometimes they'll get, they'll get a few extra grants that are applied for. Ms. Scarborough does a terrific job trying to get additional funds for this county for special ed. But we do receive a couple that, it's a lot of work applying for it, but it's essentially, it's a, it's a formula grant, it's there if you fill out the paperwork. And that is the school age money, which is close to three point five million dollars this year, and there's a pre-K fund for special education, which is one oh six, five thirty-eight this year. Special ed funds, federal special ed funds can be spent on any type of special education Outside of the gifted program, we do consider gifted, talented and gifted in West Virginia as special education. That's not considered special education by the feds. So, those are not allowable, but anything else goes. But the biggest thing you have to watch out for with special ed funds is what's called maintenance of effort, and to try to keep that in layman's terms, you have to be able to appropriate the same amount of basic funding each year out of your general fund. So, if you spend a bunch of money on special ed out of your general fund this year, you have to do that next year, and the year after that, and the year after that. You, you can't just go wild one year and, and then go back to the old days. Once you make that commitment, it's, you're stuck with it. And the feds do that to make sure that you're not supplanting, we talked about that at the beginning, you're not supplanting federal funds. Once you've made that commitment as a county board, you can't go back on that commitment. That's basically what that's about. The next one we have is a Twenty-First Century Learning Center grant, that is at Spring Hill, and I believe we are in the last year of that grant. And so, there, there would be an opportunity, Ms. Giles, to reapply for a new grant. I, I believe that application process takes place over the winter, so that should be coming up pretty soon. But if that's something that Spring Hill would like to continue, they'll have to reapply for that grant, because it is a five-year program. But it, it's, it's a program that helps with after-school and summer programs at the school, and so, you know, they do, you know, they, they do use it and get quite a bit of value for their students, in addition to some Title I funds that they, they blend with it. Okay? Any questions there? The next one is Title I, and Title I is, you know, we talked, that one's, like I said, it was one of the bigger pieces of the pie. That's one that you tend to hear a lot more about, because, you know, it is, you know, it, it impacts so many schools, it's such a large grant. This year's amount is about five point three million dollars, that's a very sizable amount of money. And the schools that we're currently serving right now are at the elementary level, you've got Altizer, Central City, Cox Landing, Explorer, Guyan Dot, High Lawn, Spring Hill, and they're on the slide. See a few of you taking notes. Two of our middle schools, Huntington Middle and Huntington East, and then also Huntington High, they're all served through the Title I grant. And so, each year, this is where Ms. Watts and, and her team come together, thank you, Carla Linville, thank you, Sue Newman, I think this gentleman's gonna be playing a role maybe in the future. They, they work out the numbers to make sure, and, and it's really incredible how they do this, they work it out to make sure that each one of these schools get what they need through Title I, and that they all get their fair share and are able to run their programs well. In doing that, just to kind of, again, stay, stay high-level a little bit, but you rank your schools from most needy to least needy, there are different ways you're able to rank them, you can rank them by grade span, as opposed to just least needy to most needy. But in doing so, you know, the, the school that's the most needy is gonna get the most money, because theoretically, they, they have the greatest need. And so, you'll see certain schools have a larger budget in Title I than others, and that's kind of how that happens. But it ends up that every school ends up getting at least a position, some, many positions of additional staff. They also get funds for parent involvement activities. I got, got a question earlier today about a parent involvement event that Title I pays for, and that, that's one of the things that Title I is really big on, is getting parents involved in the school. It is a formula grant, so it, it's one, again, that, you know, we're not really competing against other districts for the money. However, you know, it's a very intensive application, so there's a lot that goes into it. Very, very few people in this county know just how much Very, very few people in this county know just how much Kelly and her people go through to make sure that grant makes it across the finish line. It's a lot of work, tremendous amount of work.
Before you move on that one, I did want to also make a clarification. And that is that when we're determining needy in the needy schools, that is not an arbitrary decision that we make. That is, it's, it's literally a process called Rank and Serve. So schools are ranked by their percent needy, which is if you, if you think about the old free and reduced lunch forms. The population that actually, you know, the percentage of the population that is on free and reduced lunch, for example. The state actually provides us a list that says by school that is served, what their percent needy population is. So the higher the percentage of, of need, the higher, the, the, the higher on the list that they get to be served. And so we cannot serve a school that is less percent needy than, we can't serve them at a higher rate per pupil than a more needy school. And so that's why a lot of times you'll find that some Title I schools, because of their sheer size and the level of their percent needy, get so much more money than, let's say, a smaller school that is, has a, has a smaller population of needy students. And so that's why we look at sometimes doing different configurations of, of grade span. And that's really how we were able to also serve the high school and to middle schools. So again, I wanted to make sure you knew that it's not an arbitrary decision as to what we, you know, we're not determining what's the most needy. It's actually something that actually comes from State Department of Education as a report. The other thing I also wanted to clarify, to indicate is, is Mr. Rotten, we took, what was our cut in Title I funding from last year to this year? Do we remember what percentage that was?
I, I know they were planning for a number, but I don't know that it actually turned out to be that number.
So between eight and 10% loss. This number represents a loss compared to last year of eight to 10%. The year prior to that, it was another eight to 10%. So we've, we've-
It wasn't as much the year before.
But was not. 5% perhaps, maybe. So we, I just want to, you know, there has been a trend where we've been reducing, we've had a reduction in how much Title I funding we've been getting in Cabo. And that's not, that's based upon the district's percent needy, but it's also based upon where other counties across West Virginia, their percent needy populations change because the state has to fund us in the same method that we fund those schools. The county with the most need gets the most money. So that's just, you know, food for thought.
Very good.
Based upon per pupil.
May I ask also, is that, what he just explained, is that, is that an explanation for the formula grant? Meaning the socioeconomic condition of the school, the parents and the people that attend a certain school? Is that what you mean when you say formula?
Formula, well, it's kind of a generic term, and I apologize if I didn't define that. There's basically two category, two, two large categories, at least the way I look at it with grants, is there's, there's a formula grant or a competitive grant. And I know, you know, this board has expressed in recent years, a lot of interest in, let's, let's be looking for some competitive grants. Let's go out and get some money. And, and we're, obviously that's something we, we hope to be able to do. And we, I think we've shown over the last several years, we, the county has been successful doing that. But some of these grants that we're dealing with, they're not really competitive. You're basically guaranteed the money as long as you complete the application and go through the process. That you, you're not having to fight for every last dollar. So these Title I dollars, there's a formula that the state uses to determine how much Cabo County is going to get. And so this year, their formula says Cabo County is going to get $5,323,959. And so I don't have to compete with Putnam County to get this money. It's just based on their formula, it's going to be granted to Cabo County as long as Cabo County complies with all the requirements of the application.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so that's Title I. And if we have any other questions, please feel free to ask. Or like I said, if there's more we want to dive into another time, we can do that too. I, I felt like this needed its own slide. This is, that's it one. We also received in the last few years, a school improvement grant through Title I. Sometimes, you know, when people get up here and present to you all, you'll hear people say CSI or the term comprehensive school improvement. You know how educators love acronyms? CSI is a grant that Kelly's division has been able to secure to, to take care of some schools that have some, some additional needs. And so those, so we mentioned the Title I funds, and that went to all of those schools we listed. These schools, that I'm about ready to name, that are on your slide here, they, they got all their Title I money, but they're getting even more because there's some needs that they have. And that's Central City, Guyan Dot, Spring Hill and Huntington East. And so that, you know, they, they're get, they're baseline funding from the county. They got their Title I money, which was supplemental. And now they're getting even more money because they have, they met certain criteria for some additional needs. And this, this CSI grant, this is on a year-to-year basis. I think we've gotten it for the last three or four years. And this year's total for, for all of those schools combined is $846,000. So it's not a terrifically large amount of money per school, but they're all benefiting at least a little bit from this extra support. We also have a Title II grant that we get every year. And this is one that historically has declined quite a bit, which is a shame because Title II is a, it's a, the restrictions are really not so tight. You could spend it at any school. But it's meant for professional development. But this, this is an area, this is a grant program that actually Washington has started to scale back in. And so our, our numbers have gone down. But this is another one of those formula grants. Money's there if we comply. But it's there for professional development for our teachers. So it's a good program. All right. Title III, that is for our English language learners. That's what the program is, is meant to support. In Cabo County, you know, we're one of the larger counties in our area. We're actually, and this is something that falls under Ms. Watts again, kind of see a recurring theme. But she's actually, her program is actually the lead of basically the whole region. That we share a grant. The money comes through here, but we, we help facilitate some, some needs for some other counties. And that's Lincoln, Logan, Mingo and Wayne. And so that's an area where we're trying to be a good neighbor. And so we, we help out some other counties around us with this grant program. And this year's allotment's about $38,000. So, yeah, we're talking about much smaller money now compared to the five-plus million in Title I. Title IV is a grant that came about in, about five years ago, I think. May have been when Trump first took office. That is about $650,000 for this year's budget. And if you look on your slides, you can see that there are some requirements that you have to spend the money on. At least 20% has to be on a well-rounded education. At least 20% on safe schools. But no more than 15% on the effective use of technology. A big thing that we take out of this grant is it helps pay, certainly does not pay the full amount. We, we blend it with some county funds, but it helps pay for our resource officers at the secondary schools. And so it does play a very big role. And then Ms. Watts and her team plan, you know, basically the rest of what, what needs to be done with, with this funding. We've gotten a program, the last couple of years, we're now in year two of Project Aware. That's where Mr. Thomas has brought to you some social workers in the past. He's got a coordinator who helps run this program. But it's at Milton Elementary, Milton Middle School in Cabo Midland. And I'll tell you, this was, this was some very, very wise planning when, when these schools were selected because these are schools that don't receive Title I funding. And so this is a way to help support some of our schools that don't otherwise have additional funding and still be able to provide them some, some behavior specialists and some support that otherwise we might not have been able to do as a county. There's McKinney-Vento homeless funds. This is not a really big program. This also falls under Mr. Thomas. You know, we did have social workers up here about two weeks ago, I think. And they presented on, you know, what they do for kids and what they're able to accomplish. So this is, you can see it's about $50,000 a year that Mr. Thomas has been able to secure, to be able to be used at, in a number of, of places in the county. You know, Harmony House branches, the City Mission, the Underwood Children's Home. But they've, they've purchased supplies for kids. They've provided tutoring support. And so that's, that's some funding they have available. Mr. Barnett receives Perkins funding. He, he applies for that every year. And you can see that this, this year's allocation's about $200,000. That is actually down quite a bit from the past. Believe the state has repurposed some funds. And so they, you know, they tried to make good on it, but that, that number is down a little bit from, in the past. But he uses those funds to support CTE programs at the Career Center and both of the high schools. And it's primarily used for equipment upgrades or repairs and also some professional development opportunities for his staff. Starting to come towards the end of this, we have adult basic ed funds. And you can see there's about 15 for adult basic and another 42 for ESL programs for adult English, English language learners. So there's, there's funding for even adults who want to come back and, and learn some things. And so that's where, that's where Mr. Barnett has some, some funding available. He applies for this money every year. And like I said, I'd be remiss without mentioning our, our child nutrition funds and what they are able to do. Our, our child nutrition program, you know, obviously we're so proud of what they've accomplished and what they've done over the last several years, particularly during the pandemic. But we're able to run this thing because we receive so much funding from the federal government. And that really comes in four pots of money. So I've listed those on your slide. There's the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program. That's the traditional program we've, we've seen for many, many years. The Summer Food Service Program. The Child and Adult Care Food Program, that's the supper program. They just have a long name. And then the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program, that's, that helps pay for salad bars. But that's particularly at needy schools. So just like we saw with Title I money, some extra benefits at some schools with high poverty. They also receive some additional child nutrition funds for some vegetables. And that's currently at Altizer, Guyan Dot, HyLawn, Explorer and Spring Hill. We do have a few other grants, just a miscellaneous list here. These are, these are some of your competitive ones. So if you guys are kind of keeping track, these are ones that the county really has gone out there, taken the initiative and has, has received. You got two of them right now for security cameras. That's Mr. Jackson and Mr. Tim Stewart. Those two guys went out there and just made it happen. Frank was able to secure about $200,000 this year for programs at the Career Center and the two high schools. And, you know, we mentioned a meeting or two ago about Mr. Meadows going out, taking the initiative to get some bus money. And he brought in $150,000 this year. We, we think that that could be more than double next year.
Wow.
Yeah. So that's why I said, I was very proud of him because he's, you know, that, that money is going to come in for maybe the next couple of years. So we're looking forward to that. And I didn't list it here, but Mr. Mr. Jackson's brought in literally over a million dollars in the last couple of months from the ECF funds, the Emergency Connectivity Fund.
That was the funding that, well, the, you obviously approved the expenditure for the bus wifi, the wifi service. That, that's, that was all possible because Mr. Jackson went very aggressively, full steam ahead to get that grant, so.
Very well done.
And I think that, I think we're actually applying for a round two, is that correct?
Pre-K iPads.
Pre-K, so we'll be able to try to get funding for all of our pre-K students to have iPads. So currently they don't, they, they're, they're not in the one-to-one, but we're going to try to make that happen, so.
And just to kind of wrap things up, I know we've, I've gone long. Fund 71 is our other special revenue fund. This one's particularly from the stimulus funds due to the COVID pandemic. So I thought that was probably warranted, giving it a slide, making sure you guys have the latest information on that. So we do have that special fund set up where the only thing that goes in is stimulus money. We don't put anything else in there. You know, we just want to make sure that we track that money separately. The state wants us to do it and we, we, we agree it's the right thing to do. With the stimulus funds, each one of those grants, it's not reoccurring. You know, there's not, it's not another application next year for the same amount. You apply for it, you get it if, if you're successful. And then once you've got it, once the money's gone, it's gone. They do all have a firm expiration date. And so if you don't spend it by that date, use it or lose it. So that's something we're, we'll be continually monitoring. Each one of these grants have their own restrictions. However, if they're related to other programs, then they're, you know, they, they'll piggyback off of them. For instance, their special ed stimulus funds, you have to spend it on special ed just like you would the other special ed funds. So, you know, very, very similar. And I've listed here some of the funds on your, on your PowerPoint that we have received, the different types of grants, including the, the last one on there is ECF. And that's what, that's what Mr. Jackson brought in just recently, which, like I said, that's, it's over a million dollars. So that's, that's quite an accomplishment. In total, this is going to sound like a gigantic number, but remember it's supposed to carry us through for several years. As of last week, the number hasn't changed since then, we have received commitments of $69.3 million in federal stimulus funds. And like I said, there's various restrictions on each one.
It does seem like a lot.
It does. It, it's on, it's on the slide if you want to look at it, but it's $69,332,632. Is the total amount committed to Cabo County related to the stimulus funds? Are there any questions from me this evening?
I, I just wanted to say how impressive this is. And I love seeing the competitive grants on there. Honestly, because we have so many go-getters, but I do not want that to lessen those formula grants. That sounds like a great deal of hoops.
It is.
But you have to, you're earning that money in order to get it, even though it's guaranteed. And just how much I appreciate all the work, Ms. Watts, that goes into that so that we can provide those services for our students. And I, you've mentioned that 800,000 isn't huge. I, I think it is, even divided between those schools. We are still giving those schools resources that we would not have been able to do out of our general fund. So I really appreciate the work that goes into this because every dollar we can get, we can give to our kids. So it's wonderful, thank you. This is great.
Thank you.
This is wonderful.
So she's going to head down here to the podium for her presentation. Madam President, board members, just wanted to pulse check, are you all cold?
I'm freezing. It's freezing.
Well, I looked over. I could tell, I saw that she looked like she was freezing. So I, I was just checking with Chip and Mr. Chip, Mr. McMillan has raised it a degree, so he, it, it should be warming up for you a little bit. Well, I saw over here Ms. Bond, I saw her shiver a little bit. I just wanted to make sure it was everybody else before I started raising the temperature.
I'm sitting in front of my fireplace, I'm telling you. I have a woman sitting in front of my fireplace, I'm telling you.
I think Mr. Hardisty's working on that.
Oh, get me a little heater.
Well, I primed him up for you, Mrs. Warren Butler.
Well, thank you, Dr. Sacks. Is everybody warm enough? Sorry. Well, I just want to speak tonight. We've had several questions about student discipline, investigations leading up to student discipline, levels of student discipline, parental notifications, student rights. I was going to give you all an overview of some of those things. The first thing, I was looking at the stages of our student investigations first. So let's say imagine Ms. Molly's teaching her band class. A paper airplane goes flying across the classroom. That is an infraction. So we look to see what the infraction is. We then determine what behavior level there is to that infraction. There's an informal hearing that the principal conducts with the student. Again, we're going to look at the student rights. We're going to look at the consequences and whether or not that would lead to an expulsion. There's an expulsion checklist also in your all's packet that our principals fill out. They give to either Mr. Boggs or Mr. Cunningham prior to bringing an expulsion to you all. Then we have the expulsions before the board hearing. I did develop a little table in there with the different, with the different levels, as well as parental notification, as well as is it a mandatory or is it a discretionary expulsion? And then I have a few scenarios if we get to that. You all, we usually bring to you all the Level III and Level IV behaviors. But there are other level behaviors that I was going to go over tonight because there's one, two, three, and four under Policy 4373. All those can come up for expulsion. They usually don't. But I did want you all to know what those levels were besides the one you all see. So we look at what infraction was committed. There are rules over who governs the classrooms. That's under 18A 51. And that is the teacher governs the classrooms. They are given these rights. It's called a loca parentis. It's a Latin term that the teacher of the classroom stands in place with the parent while they are in the classroom building. They exercise the authority over pretty much everything in the classroom. And they exercise that authority from the time the children get to the school until they get to their homes, if they ride with their parents, or from the time the children get to the school until they get to their designated bus stop. Under this code, the teacher may slew the students if they engage in disorderly conduct. If they interfere in the orderly conduct of the instruction in the classroom, they intimidate or attempt to intimidate a school personnel, use profane language with school personnel, willfully disobey school personnel, or willfully disobey school rules. And that's all covered under 18A 51. Then we go to, after we have an infraction in the classroom, we have to determine what level that infraction is. Policy 4373 narrows down. Do y'all have any questions? I'm sorry.
No, I'm with you.
Policy 4373 narrows down those different infractions. And there are different levels. Okay. There's Level I, which is minimally disruptive. I have an 11-year-old son. I feel like my house stays at a minimally disruptive level at all times between he and his friends. Level II, however, is more disruptive. That would be the weekend they broke my television. But then there are Level Threes that are eminently dangerous. And then our Level Fours are some that come to you. Those are our Safe Schools Acts. Those are those that can be a felony, a battery against a school employee, illegal substances on school grounds, and then dangerous weapons. So our Level Fours are our big safe schools. I call them the Big Four because those are the ones that come automatically to you all. Not automatically, but those are the ones that are mandatory expulsions as opposed to the discretionary expulsions under our Level III behaviors. Yes, Ms. Bond?
So Level III and IV is what the board is going to say?
Yes. But Level Threes are discretionary. Level Fours are the mandatories.
Gotcha. Okay.
So we have our Level I behaviors. And those are things like cheating, deceit, not that they're not bad, but inappropriate appearance, vehicle parking violations if you park in the principal's spot at a school, possession of inappropriate personal property, inappropriate displays of affection, falsifying identity, failures to serve detention. Under those, there are different consequences for those. Those include administrative conferences, parent-teacher conferences, academic sanctions, detention. Sometimes we have behavior contracts, or you check in weekly or daily with progress reports that are sent home to parents. You can revoke the privileges. If you park in the principal's parking lot, you will not be able to drive to school anymore. There's, like I said, there's always a possible expulsion. There has to be something very severe under these to lead to expulsion, but that's under there. And there's always a possibility that law enforcement be called. If there's, I can't imagine a scenario that that would happen. But under one of these, if they feel that law enforcement needs to be included, they will be included under these Level Ones. Under the Level Ones, if you look at Policy 4373, it's Chapter 5, Section 2. And I'll show you all the chart I made towards the end. When you have these, parent notification is discretionary. And that's because these are minimally disruptive behaviors. These are not ones that are harming other people in the classroom. These are not ones that are harming other students. They are disruptive, but they're minimally disruptive. So the principal has discretion whether or not to inform the parents prior to conducting the informal conferences. Are there any questions with our Level Ones? We have our Level II behaviors. Again, these are disruptive behaviors. They completely disrupt the educational process, and they can also pose damage or harm to the student or to others in the classroom. Those behaviors are more dangerous behaviors, gang-related activity, technology misuse, habitual violation of school rules, leaving the school without permission, physical fight without injury, possession of imitation weapon, possession of a knife that doesn't meet the dangerous weapons definition that we look at on our Level IV expulsion's behaviors. And then profane language, obscene gestures towards another student or towards an employee. Our Level II consequences are similar to our Level Ones. Those include those administrative conferences, our parent-teacher conferences, our counseling referrals, detention. They can revoke their privileges, in-school suspension. But they do expel them on those a little bit more. You can have denial of participation in class activities, voluntary weekend detentions. The principal can recommend an AEC under some of these, and those are the Alternative Education Committee. That's where our students are placed. If you hear they've been placed for 45 days or placed at a crossroads, that committee meets and they decide the student needs to be placed for a while to get them back on track, get their grades back, and recognize the severity of the consequences of the actions they have taken. It can lead to out-of-school suspension. And then again, also possible expulsion and law enforcement. But under Level Ones and Level Twos, those usually don't reach you all, and they usually don't reach expulsions. Under Level Twos and Chapter 5, Section 2, parental notification here is encouraged because these are more disruptive behaviors. It's more alarming if you're a teacher in a classroom and your child's participating in gang activity or something along those lines. You're encouraged to tell the parent that, hey, this is going on. Is there something going on at home? What can we look at? As opposed to where it's more discretionary with the Level Ones that are not as intense. Are there any questions with our Level Twos? Yes.
I have a question. When you say a student may be placed for 45 days, who exactly like makes that call? Are they, you had mentioned there's a checklist that they go through?
Well, no, sorry. I'm sorry. Well, that's what, I'm here. That's the Alternative Education Committee. And that's a committee that looks at them. They're members of the board here, but that's who places them. The checklist is for the expulsions. That's before they come to you all, our Level Threes, Level Fours, that our principals fill out to make sure we've crossed all our Ts and dotted our Is. Whether or not we need a manifestation, if we've met our deadlines, if the parents have been notified, all those things are on that checklist, so. But the AEC committee is who places the students for the 45 days before they come to you all for an expulsion. And then we move on to our Level III behaviors. These behaviors are eminently dangerous. Aggressive behaviors, and they're willfully committed, they are known to be illegal, sorry, and harmful to people and their property. And these are some that come before you all. These are the batteries against our students. These are defacing school property, gambling, hazing, trespassing, larceny, sexual misconduct, threat of injury against an employer or student, harassment, bullying, or intimidation, oh, false, like a false fire alarm or forgery. I'm sorry. Our Level III consequences, again, mirror our Level Ones and our Level Twos. And there are the administrative conferences, the parent-teacher conferences, sanctions, referrals, daily weekend, daily, weekly check-in reports, changing the student's class schedule. If he's with a group of friends that are, this is not working out, well, maybe we'll change the class schedule and you guys can behave over here. Revocation of the privileges, detention, in-school suspension, immediate exclusion from the teacher's classroom, denial of participation again in extracurricular events, voluntary weekend detention. Again, the principal here may recommend the AEC and that they be placed, out-of-school suspension, and then possible expulsion. As always, if it's something that is so severe, they feel law enforcement needs to be involved, they will involve law enforcement with these as well. I have this slide about harassment and bullying. That's just for your all's reference of what is done when there's a harassment or bullying allegation and the steps that are taken. We do take it very seriously. So we go through these necessary steps to make sure we've taken care of the problem once it comes to our attention. Under our Level Threes, it is more intense, and that goes to our, that looks at our code for some of the consequences. And that's, huh, this is where we talk about the mays. So the principal may suspend the child for up to 10 days. They may recommend the child for expulsion. And it lists the different disciplinary infractions that they may suspend them for. But again, these are the Level Threes. These are the ones that come to you all, the Level Threes and Level Fours. But it's not a mandatory expulsion. Again, this is a discretionary expulsion. And under this one, well, prior to having our informal hearings before suspending them for the 10 days, we look at Chapter 5, Section 2, and notification to the parents is, sorry. You should make a reasonable effort to make a notification to the parents under this one, under our Level Threes. And the Level Four is going to look exactly the same. A reasonable effort to contact the parents prior to the informal hearing. Unless it's going to, that notification or trying to make that notification, it's going to compromise the overall safety of the school and the students and the staff there. So it's a reasonable effort, but we're not going to continue to call and call and call when we have to make sure our students are safe in that timeframe. And that's the same again for the Threes and the Fours. Are there any questions with this one? And then we get to our Big Fours, and these are our Safe Schools Acts, Acts Behavior, sorry, under West Virginia Code 18A 51A, A and B. And again, those are the Big Four. Those are the crimes that can be considered felonies, and those are arson. Sorry, terroristic threats or acts, grand larceny, which I've not seen that. Malicious wounding, or sexual assault. Then we also have our battery against the school employee. We have our illegal substances on school grounds, and we have our possessions of a dangerous weapon. Again, under the Code, West Virginia, under West Virginia Code 6172, which I'd like to provide you all, we have our expulsion hearings of what defines a dangerous weapon under that code and how it makes it qualified under 18A 51A. Because if you remember, when we go back to our Level Twos, we have the imitation weapons. But those don't qualify as a dangerous weapon under the code because they're imitation weapons, and they just don't fit the different categories under our code. I missed a bomb threat, sorry, on there for our felonies. And here we are, our Level Fours is the 18A 51AA, and this is, these are our Shaws. These are our mandatory expulsions. We have to expel them for these, the Big Four, I call them, when they come to us. So the principal shall suspend the student. They shall recommend them for expulsion. And you all shall expel them for 12 consecutive months, 365 days at the minimum. Are there any questions? Oh, and the parental notification, sorry, again, for Level Four is the same as Level Three. You should make a reasonable effort, but not if that reasonable effort is going to put the students, staff, or school in harms way. So we're going to try, but if we need to make sure our students are safe, we're going to do that too. And they're going to go back and try to call the parents. We're not just going to be like, we forgot about this. But we're going to make a reasonable effort and make sure our kids are safe. After we have had an infraction, and we would determine whether or not it's a Level I, II, III, or IV behavior, there is the informal hearing. And at that informal hearing, the principal determines what the alleged actions are. They conduct that informal hearing before the student is suspended unless they feel that keeping the student in the school is going to cause harm, or the student's continuing to cause a disruption, then they will just immediately ask the student to leave. They give telephonic notice of the informal hearing, if possible, to the parents prior to conducting that informal hearing. During that informal hearing, I think the principal asks the child if they admit or deny the allegations. If they deny those allegations, they give them an explanation of the evidence they have saying, hey, I believe you did this because we have this, this, and this. We have it on video, or we have witnesses, or we have this. And then once they present, once they've denied the allegations, and the principal's presented the student with the evidence, the student has the opportunity to present his or her version of what they are saying happened and why they're denying the allegations before them. And if the student does not show for the informal conference, I don't know if the students will leave. But if the student is not there, then they're automatically suspended. These informal conferences that are conducted with the principal have to be reported that day. There has to be a letter in writing sent to the parents through the US Mail. And the suspension also has to be reported to County Superintendent or Dr. Sacks. Are there any questions about our informal hearings?
I'm sorry. Help me. If a student would express, no, I did not do this, would that reflect in their statement? What happens at that point if the student's like, hey, this wasn't me? What happens at that point?
I'm sorry. Well, that's when the principal or administrator will say, well, we have this evidence. Well, Alyssa, we saw you on camera writing your name on the door. Well, that's when you have your opportunity to present your version of, well, that was my twin. We look just alike. That wasn't me. Or whatever your version is going to be. But they're going to say, no, it wasn't me. But they're going to say, well, this is what we have. So now you tell us why we should believe, why you didn't do it, why you're denying this.
Okay. At what point is a statement done? I'm confused on where that comes in with a student when an infraction has been made and we ask the student to write down their story. When does that happen in that process?
That would be after the informal, after the informal conference. After they, after we've had the exchange of, I'm going to admit it, I'm going to deny it, here's the evidence, then they're going to write their statement.
Okay. I'm sorry. I was too far ahead.
And I don't, no, I'm not sure if I put that in there, so thank you.
Yes, I may be late, but I just had a thought. What if, when you have a student in there, you make an attempt to contact a parent, you exercise what you're supposed to do and don't get them, what if a student just say, I don't want to talk about it? What happens? I mean, what happens to that student or what happens in that situation?
I'm sure the principal, depending on what was grade level, or if it be call Mr. Boggs or Mr. Cunningham and call Superintendent Sacks, we would still try to contact the parent.
Sure.
Again, but that's when we're going to present them with the evidence of, we saw you doing this, or people have this. If it's something written down about a bomb threat or bringing a gun, well, we have these Snapchats with your name attached to it.
If they go silent and say, I don't want to discuss it. I feel intimidated. I need somebody here, my parent or my attorney. I'm just curious. I'm throwing this out as a, I don't want to say devil's advocate, but an advocate, you know. What if you get a student that does that? What happens?
We'll have to continue talking. We'll have to, um, continue talking to the student and continue trying to contact the parents. Sometimes our parents don't have phones that work.
Sure.
Or phones that are out of service. Um, usually students, and I'm gonna go into the student rights here in a second, but they do not have the right against self-incrimination or the right not to speak, as you do when you're an adult, under the Miranda laws. Um, it's not the same. They're not in custody, as you would see in Miranda v. Arizona. They're, they're in a school setting, and the school personnel and the SROs, as long as they're acting and investigating school-related matters, have the right to, um, investigate and talk to that student. I would assume they would explain that to the student that you need to tell us what's going on, because it's not the same as criminal, and we'll go to the hearings again. It's not, we're not going, beyond a reasonable doubt, it's a preponderance of the evidence when we go to our hearings. So, they, they do not have those same rights as you do when you're downtown, or when you've been detained.
Sure.
By an officer, or where you're being searched. Um, as long as there's a reasonable suspicion, um, reasonable cause, they need to speak because their rights, their rights differ when they're in the school, because again, the teachers and the principals are in local apprentices. This is my house. So, you get on the bus, or until you get in your parents' car, we're, we're gonna follow my rules, so.
Absolutely. I would think, I would think, and you could correct me if wrong, uh, and in that case, the principal would proceed, or administration would proceed with whatever disciplinary action required?
Well, yes, because they have the evidence, and they're gonna say, well, the student denied it. However, we have this, this, and this. Now, if they don't have any evidence, that would be a problem. But as long as they have evidence, pictures, writings, videos of what has happened, well, it's a preponderance of the evidence. It's not beyond a reasonable doubt. We have this evidence stating here, or showing here, this student did this, so they could, they, I mean, they could go, yes, they could proceed.
Thank you, appreciate.
You're welcome.
This is horrible.
Yes, sir?
I would force the amendment to Constitution, student rights. A student has the right not to speak, not the right to state it, unless his parents, or legal party, or attorney is present. And he can ask, if he hasn't been charged, he can ask to leave that, that area that he was in, and go back to the class.
You skipped ahead of me, Mr. Parsons. Have you, were you reading ahead of him?
The fourth amendment to the Constitution.
Yes, that's, that's my next section. You, you mean, go onto that?
And if he's seventeen, you know, under seventeen, the parent's, that, I read that there. You wanna read it off the front, but you didn't delete it.
Well, I have that in, I have that in the, in the, in the, I didn't delete it. I have that in the presentation. Um, I'm gonna go with the, uh, students' rights under policy 4373, and the rights, these are rights in the hearing with you all. So, they have a right to have an attorney. They have a right to call witnesses. They have a right to, um, if the expulsion is not warranted, if somehow during the investigation they find the expulsion is not warranted, they have the right to remain in school. Am I on the right page? Okay, yes. Um, again, our expulsion hearings are under the preponderance of the evidence standard. It's not beyond a reasonable doubt. Um, it is final within Campbell County Schools, but the parents do have a right to appeal it to the state superintendent. If the state superintendent upholds your all's recommendation, the parents can file a, a case in civil court. Now, as to, um, your discussion, you're right, under the Fourth Amendment, the students, um, right, blah, there's a right against self-incrimination. However, when it comes to our students and our school personnel, they are not officers of the court. They're not police officers, and they are, they are able, sorry, well, uh, they're able to search their lockers, um, as long as they have a reasonable suspicion that something's in there. Their lockers, their book bags, those things, because they're, they're not police officers. They're not acting under the color of the law, color of title. They are within the school rights, and that's why it's different within the school, as opposed to if they were outside of the school, in a jailhouse, a detention center, or in some other place.
That's why I'm reading the Fourth Amendment, the Constitution for students. And it's very, they have to issue the, the school policies. They have to follow the school policies.
And that's why we follow policy 43s?
But a child, still, still intimidated by a minister or a policeman, and he can ask, if he hasn't been charged, leave.
Okay. Under our, we call, we follow West Virginia Code 18A, 51, West Virginia Code 18A, 51A, and then policy 4373, chapter two, section six. And that's what's up on the board. That says, as long as there's a reasonable suspicion, um, as long as, again, where the principals and the teachers are acting as school personnel, they're not acting as officers, they are allowed to search, they are allowed to question that student. So, while the criminal courts and other, other courts follow, usually crimes are under West Virginia Code 61, we're narrowed to these. West Virginia, 18A, 51, 18A, 51A, policy 4373, and against-
Does that require an statement?
No, that's what the police officer would do.
He has to have evidence.
But as long as the schools have a reasonable suspicion, they can. The police officer would have to have evidence, so we're just a preponderance.
If he's mad, this child is entitled to his attorney, legal counsel, or parent.
And that's when they file a petition, and they, if they take them down to the courthouse for a detention hearing, that's when the students are appointed a public defender. If the parents do not have a private attorney, and that's when all of that takes place, because that is in the criminal setting, as opposed to the school setting. So, yes, you are correct. When they have, are charged with a crime, that puts it in the criminal realm, as opposed to the schoolhouse realm.
They do not tell the parents to take them to court.
But they're not taking them to the detention center?
They do not take them down to courthouse, then send them to detention center.
Who doesn't tell them? I'm sorry. The police officers? Well, I, we don't control the police officers. We can, that would be something that our HPD or the sheriff's department. I'm, I'm sorry.
I think the, I think the other thing that is, uh, 'cause I, I think that Mr. Parsons is also trying to, to explain that the child has the right not to answer and to leave, okay? The child does not necessarily have the right to go back to the classroom, um, because the investigation still has to be concluded, but the child absolutely has the right to not answer. And, um, if they choose not to answer, um, that's fine, but the principal still has the responsibility to identify consequences based upon the preponderance of the evidence. So, let's say that, you know, um, a weapon is found in a backpack, and, uh, the, the, the principal's been made aware from another student that there's a weapon in a backpack. They go up to the student, they say, we need to search your backpack. They search the backpack, there's, uh, a weapon, and then they say, is this yours? The child at that point has the, if they, if they don't wanna answer, they don't have to. Um, but the administrator's gonna have no other choice but to be able to handle the consequences regardless of a student's statement. Uh, at that point, it would be turned over, depending upon what type of weapon it was, could be turned over to the SRO, to the police, where charges could be filed, and at that point, uh, that would be when, um, uh, the student would be entitled to an attorney and so on and so forth. Uh, or if, at the point where an expulsion is, is, uh, recommended, the child would have the, uh, right to an attorney for their formal hearing before the board. So, that's when the, the child has the rights for an attorney present at that point. Among all those steps, though, every reasonable effort to be able to contact the family is required to be made.
Continuing, and continuing to be made.
So, I, so, uh, I didn't want you to, to be led to believe that we did not think that that was correct. We do think that's correct, and we cannot force a child to respond, but if they choose not to, it doesn't mean that discipline is not going to occur. It doesn't mean that charges won't be filed. It just means that they're choosing not to cooperate with the investigation.
I'd say 99% of parents have cell phone, pick a call, you know, keep a call, and get a person before they start questioning that child.
Well, that's if the parent, and again, this is if the parent has provided their cellphone and the student contact information. Many times, that doesn't happen.
They could tell you what, you could ask it back.
Who, who's that?
The student, another father's cellphone.
Well, you'd be surprised how many students don't know their parent's cellphone number. But again, every reasonable effort is, is, is supposed to be made.
But I want, I want the children to be, you know, treated fairly and equally, like that.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree more. We, we-
I don't wanna be questioned, is it saying something, writing a statement, without some form of legal person there, someone.
They would have the ability for legal counsel, again, if there was a criminal, criminal charges, or they're before the board.
Well, some of those statements we read in the expulsion hearing, uh, they're just dodging down. I know that, I know that we have follow-up policies.
Yes, sir, and that's the, we, we have to fol- follow policy 4373, and that's where our hands are tied.
The policy, schools have, they just wanna be on equal terms.
Absolutely.
Okay. You're welcome.
I learned a lot today.
Uh, well, I'll thank you. Um, oh, the thing's not working. Jed? Where's Jed?
Can you tell us which page you're on right now?
I don't even know.
I'm on 39.
Well, I think it's up there. I, I was on 39. Yes, you're correct.
Thank you, Alyssa. So, we've done the student rights and responsibilities. Um, there's two copies of that in there, and we have consequences or expulsions, and that's where, I have a copy of the expulsion checklist in there for you all, and that is, thank you, you don't really need that, what is sent to Mr. Boggs and Mr. Cunningham prior to, um, having the expulsion hearing, and they look at, uh, the letter of the disciplinary action, all incidents from the Weaver's reports, as we've seen, whether or not the investigation report was replete, repeated, completed. Um, witness statements, they're gonna look if it's a student with special education needs, if a manifestation, um, was done, and if it was found to be a manifestation of their disability. Um, they do the risk assessments, and then they do the threat assessments for the students, and they need to check that all of these things have been done, um, prior to recommending expulsion to the board, and all these things have to be done within 10 days of when the incident occurred, so.
Is that business day, like school days, or just a total of 10 days, including that weekend?
Business days.
Business days, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. We'd be in real trouble.
Yeah, it'd be super tight.
And under this, before they cut, oh, could you fix me? Thank you. Um, before they come to you all, I made this chart, 'cause I know we've had questions about, oh, um, the chart's not on there. Questions about the different levels, the parental notifications, and then again, if it's a mandatory or discretionary expulsion. So, under level one, again, it's discretionary to notify the parents. Under two, it's encouraged to notify the parents. Under three and four, it's that reasonable effort standard, but not over the safety of the students, um, and staff, and the classroom. It also has on here for you all the different levels. It doesn't have, doesn't have each individual infraction, but it does have the different levels and what they, so the minimally disruptive, the disruptive, the eminently dangerous, the illegal, the harmful, and then our safe schools act, which are our big four.
I mean, may I speak freely? I mean, as a parent, when we're talking about that level one, children are children, and you can't put big heads on little bodies. That doesn't work. And let's say a, a child is talking, and the teacher gets after this child, and, and that, that student self-corrects, okay? There, I don't feel the need, and I think a lot of teachers, they, they don't want to go home because it's not that serious yet. That they talked to the student, the student corrected the behavior, it's not a problem anymore. Um, they don't want that student in trouble at home when it's, it's been taken care of. It's not, so I appreciate that discretion, and I, I guess the truth is, I, I trust my children's teachers, and I trust the administrators, um, to do that. And I think all reasonable effort should absolutely be made to contact parents. Not all parents have desk jobs. Some are up the line fixing electric. Some people cannot, it's not that they don't want to answer that.
They can't.
They physically can't. Maybe they're in surgery. They, they can't stop what they're doing to pick that up, but at the same time, if there is maybe a threat made, then what is important, whether that threat be true or false, is to the protection of all the other students in the building. And if we need to protect them and then try to call again, I think that's reasonable. Um, and the safest thing to do, and if it proves to be false, wonderful, then we took all precautions and everyone is safe, and then we can deal with that situation. But, um, I appreciate that, be- because teachers know what they're doing in that classroom, and, um, I feel like administrators know how to handle kids. They work with kids every day.
And you can see how the parental notifications increase as the levels increase, because, okay, it's a little bit more serious infraction. Okay, we, you're encouraged to call them, or make every reasonable effort to call them and continue calling them when it's three and fours, because these are big deal discipline issues that they have.
Right, right. I mean, that, that makes sense to me.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I had some scenarios. Um-
No, these are helpful. This is, making, this makes the material relevant.
Um, Justin is a 16-year-old student at Farmville High School. Um, during his lunch, oh, still says, I'll change it to people that we know. Um, Justin told Jody, Kim, and Jason that he had an AK-47, a Beretta, I had to look up these guns, I don't know anything about guns, and an Excalibur rifle, um, in his locker, and he was gonna shoot the students in the school who wore purple shirts that day. Um, one of the students informed the administration. The administration put the school on immediate lockdown, questioned Justin and the student who turned over, um, the information, and they called Justin's parents to inform him of the incident. Um, what level of behavior would this be?
Four.
And what is the parental notification required?
Shou.
The parental notification.
Oh, reasonable, reasonable.
And is this, is this a shou, or is this a, a may?
For expulsion, this is mandatory expulsion.
Yes.
Ooh, it's like a quiz. This is-
I had fun with this part.
I like this, yeah.
Kristen had a great weekend. She'd gone skating, she hung out with her friends, and she went to her grandmother's birthday party. I totally did. In the midst of all this fun, she forgot to study for her World War II history test.
Aww.
Ryan Sacks is the smartest boy in class, and he always does his homework. So, Kristen decided to cheat off of Ryan's test just this once, however the teacher caught her. So, what level of behavior would this be?
This could, this could fall into two, I think. Cheating.
No, cheating, I believe it's one, I believe.
Wasn't cheating, wasn't that level two?
I know, I think it's a one. I have to watch my daughter. Yes, cheating is a one.
It's a one.
Yes, yes. Cheating and deceit is a one. And so, what is the level, um, of notification for parents?
Uh, discretionary, they can.
Okay, you're, go on ahead, Bishop Shaw. What's three? You must be like Ryan.
It must be mandatory or discretionary.
It's a, is it ma- okay. Huh, they can be. Okay, scenario three. Kelly was given time during her science class to look up different species of butterflies. She did not wanna look up butterflies because the homecoming dance was in less than a month, and she had not said yes to the dress. Instead of looking at the monarchs, she began to search for dresses. The teacher caught her and asked her to return to her assigned task. She researched butterflies for a few more minutes, but when she heard the other girls discussing their shoes and accessories, she began to panic because she didn't have a dress yet. So, she began to search again because she needed to have this dress. Unfortunately, the teacher caught her again and sent her to the principal's office. So, what have behaviors, 'cause what level, what behaviors could this be?
Improper use.
Technology misuse, but she continued to do it.
And she was corrected, and then re, I would say two.
Insubor, could it be insubordination?
Yeah.
And what is the level of parent, parental notification?
Uh.
Encouraged, and maybe they'll take her to the dress shop after school so she can quit looking up dresses during school time. And would it be mandatory or discretionary?
I would, discretionary.
If it was an expulsion? No, no, it's discretionary. Our last one. Tim Hardesty has a disciplinary record of mal long. One Wednesday morning, he was just being downright unruly. He told Jed he was gonna punch him in the face because he was just too nice, and everybody liked him. Then he punched Jed in the face. After he punched Jed, he dumped all the trash out of the trash can. He threw a stink bomb in the main concourse. Then he ran on the hallway writing "School stinks" on all the walls, and just to finish it off, he pulled the fire alarm. So-
Oh, pulled the fire alarm. That, that would drop it to four, wouldn't it, the fire?
No. Parsons got it, three, 'cause it's just-
Well, well done you.
Well, he's, he's done several, though, so which ones would you?
Assault, vandalism, destruction of school property.
Tim was awful, yes.
It was a bad day.
It was a bad day.
Real bad.
He did, 'cause he was too nice, and everybody liked him. You hear the Smiley?
Yeah. But he punched somebody.
Yes.
Yeah.
This-
Why didn't me?
That's assault. Four. It's both figurative-
Oh, Drew, I left you out!
And literal, school stinks.
Drew stole some money.
That was good.
Do y'all have any other questions?
Yep. What, what did this end up being? 'Cause I was thinking four. Is it not four?
Well, it could be a three or four. I mean, that's up to the, I mean, the way- Well, it could be a three or four, I mean, that's up to the, I mean, the way, considering his disciplinary record and everything that he's done, he actually, there's an assault if you say you're going to hit somebody, that's a battery if you actually touch that person.
Which he did.
Yes, then there was a destruction of school property, and then the stink bomb, and then the, what else did you do?
Then writing school stinks, which is both figurative and literal at that point, because he'd...
I want to know how Mr. Hardy, you got, Hardesty got a job, that he got a record like this?
I don't know.
That was one of the, he threatened to book him. That was a qualification.
Yeah. Madam President, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Mrs. President, Mrs. Bond, Ms. Smalley, Ms. Hardesty, Ms. Hardesty, Ms. Hardesty, aye?
Aye.
Make a motion, we actually need to hear it more.
Well, he turned it up a little bit, I'll, we'll make sure he gets it turned up a little bit. Board members, I did want to make, I did want to make you...